...for February 25th at Crew Core District 76. Remind standing for the pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Rule call please.
Sri Arjuna.
Here.
Linda Bailey.
Yes.
Michelle Franklin. Absent, Rebecca Kern here. Julie Tru.
Here.
Judy Strong, you guys signed in, Charles Thomas.
Here.
Comments from the audience on that? Seeing none, I need a motion for the consignment agenda, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to have three good consent agenda.
Two or seven. Questions?
Oh yes, this is a poor issue question. Two thought I forgot. There's a check written to Illinois Central College for 15/27/07. That's for your internet access. We do a one-time annual payment for our T-line. Overlander, there was a $500 bill for an intercom system. We had to install an intercom in the speech room. For safety purposes, students are with their teachers in that room that shared with the social worker and there was no means to call the office. And there was a check to an interpreter for interpretation services. We kept hearing parent appearance. Special ed services to a new probably was brought to Linda's attention, I'm guessing, because it's a new name. It's for mobility training. We have students that are coming in with more significant special ed needs. And then a check to the Illinois Association of School Boards is supposed to be a test search.
Is that, it said half in your account.
Yeah, it's $5,000 on the debt.
$5,000 and that cover.
Along with, I think there's some training package afterwards. It's included in there.
It's like that pass the sticker shop. That was a little pricey.
But hopefully you'll be pleased with the result.
Can you have one?
I have one. All right. What is our limit on speech therapists?
Well, you know, that's a sticky widget because...
$11,000 in a month period.
Well, it's for two people.
I know.
And you, you're bound by law to honor those services. Now, we're going to be in a mess next year because there aren't that speech therapists available. And Brenda may not be renewing. And so that's something Alex is going to have to talk about. And we try to post. A lot of these speech therapists are going to private companies. And their cost is even going to be higher.
I was wondering if we're going to exceed what our contract is, what we agreed to. I was so tiny.
I can pull, I can pull for contract. I mean, it's not a contractual matter. It's you have to service those folks.
Well, if we go past the amount that we agreed upon, it's going to be different now.
I, I'll pull out the contract. I think at the time when I tried to explain this, I know it's important to attach amount of money on service, right? But you are bound by law and the law certain vents your desire.
I understand that, but I'm just asking, since we're paying this price now, after the return, after we get past whatever it is, is it going to be more at that point in time? Is the rates going to increase?
Oh, their rates won't. But once they leave, I think you're going to see a rate increase. We're trying to negotiate with one of the interns to see if we can hire her as a parapro employee belonging to the district. And then she finishes her certification in return for which she would remain an employee of the district for a given amount of time. So we invest in her and she in turn invests in you. We're trying, I'm trying before I go to secure a speech therapist for you because it's your...
Just curious.
Yeah, I know.
$11,000.
I know it's a lot.
Well, not only that, but it's only from January 14th through January 25th. That seems extensive time for $11,000. We're talking, what, two weeks for $11,000.
Shelly about it today. It was, she said it was for two people for a month. And remember, it always appears to be higher because they cover their own benefits. So when you look at a teacher salary, you see one thing because the benefit package is on a different page. But when you see purchase service, like Jay Wendell and a speech therapist, you see everything at once. So it appears to be greater. But when Shelly and I ran the numbers and informally, if we can do again, there was very little difference between the money we spent prior and the money we spend now.
If you look back on your board report, we use 56%. That answers your question.
And we should be at about 66% right now. If you look at your percentages in the back, we, you know, we're doing very well on the budget. We stand to, again, remain in the black, which is a Christmas miracle, but not by much, just by about $18,000. But presently, we have over half a million in there.
My question for the rest of the members might be, did anyone get the opportunity to go in and ask for documentation on any of these expenditures?
What do you mean documentation?
They're again in some of the financial sonars. They're stating that, I believe Rebecca's heard this as we've talked about it, they're stating that, and if you look in Meister, he's telling us the responsibility of whether or not this is a accurate report falls on our shoulders as board members. And one of the ways that they tell us to put some checks and balances on is by going in and just randomly say, can I see any documentation?
Actually, I think Linda used to, correct me if I'm wrong, require, and we could begin again, who brought the payments into a board meeting and you could come early and look through it all you wanted.
Which also brings up another note. These came in Saturday at 6:00. I worked on it today, so there was no way I could get in. And obviously, nobody else has followed through with that kind of check either.
There is a book that I would like the district, by each of us, on. I think I gave Mr. Thomas and Ms. Davis the name of the essentials for elementary school finance.
We purchased those three when you first started.
No, not the essentials. If I looked today again, I do not have.
Well, you might have given it back to me. Remember the finance book? It's a paperback book. It's about, looks like a board book.
Yeah, it's not supposed to be very big. I've seen it at the seminars.
Yes, I did distribute those and we can get those. We need to try and get those every year.
I would really encourage all of us to look at that because as I'm looking at this financial report, I'm thinking, they're putting all the responsibility on us to make sure this is accurate. He just takes what he gets and he puts the accuracy back upon board members.
Well, and one of the things that you do is you defer to your superintendent, make sure that, I've checked very thoroughly. And what I can tell you is that Shelly Corwin, well, is head and shoulders above many bookkeepers. She is lauded by the people I've brought in, both the auditor and both CPAs. So I have to feel assured that what we're doing is good practice.
That's correct.
And for you to add to the vigilance by looking at the folder of payments would be adequate. In other words, come early before the board meeting and look. And these books are open.
The training on these, I mean, we're talking pretty advanced training on how to budget in. If you look at our agenda, most everything is based on financial issues. And we have little to none training. So even maybe possibly bring in Andy, this accountant to say...
Oh, he said he would come in.
Okay, to say that, okay, this is some things that you need to be doing. Because I don't feel comfortable when I look at these. And I know I've talked to a number of other people and they've come into the same thing. I have no idea. And so for us to be a convo for these, I would, first of all, like that school finance book. And if we could get the accountant in before he wants us to accept this. You know, we have 12 months that this is covered. And so we can't wait till the 12th month to learn anything on it. We need it now. And I take nothing away from you, Mrs. Davis, on your accountability. I've always been comfortable with that. I take nothing away from Shelly's responsibility as bookkeeper. I'm just reporting that on the financial seminars. Somebody else, please take some of these. Because on those financial seminars, they're telling us that we need to do certain steps. Protection, not only for the district, but even for employees should be in place. And so with that said...
Well, and I think you have a good point and we can bring the payments list. But Linda referred to this document and I think it was she that, maybe I'm incorrect, but I think it was she that recommended it. What is a very effective way for you to check and balance? Back of the board book at the report that talks about percentages. It's a very user-friendly way to determine if we are online, are we, where we need to be with our expenditures. I would suggest that, that this board gets much more information than most boards in different ways so that you can most easily understand the material that you're looking at. If there's ways that we can enhance that, great. You know, and one of those can be to bring the chart of accounts to the board meeting and then you can cruise it at your pleasure. You know, come early and look through it.
I know, they used to be packets out on Thursday night. And you only have one day to get into the district to get any accounting questions or documentations from the office.
All you have to do is email me. That's what Linda does.
Yeah. But I had to do it this afternoon, which I apologize for not giving you my chance. But I had appointments.
And it depends on what's going on in the office and, you know, what other requirements we have.
Getting more packets on Thursday nights was a privilege. It's required to have 48 hours in advance. Myself, who delivers them, my hand, who uses my gas and my car and everything else, you know, sometimes schedules change. So unfortunately, you know, if, if more packets need to be picked up themselves, big luck.
And I have done that and I've also delivered. So I don't know why that wasn't presented. Judy, did you deliver this month because it's not working out?
But we're still paying an employee. But could it deliver? It's a problem.
I mean, like getting the $48 in advance, this is what's required.
It's just that you have that one little window of eight hours to get any information you want. And I'm just finding the more I am trained on any financial accountability, I'm getting more and more overwhelmed with what responsibility as a member of the school board we have. And so I'm just really ask that the rest of us, you know, all of you consider as much as possible, whether it's training or books to get into, or even time to be able to get more than eight hours. I worked today, so I couldn't come in. I have the same school hours as this school. So it limits me to perform my duties.
Well, and then it is problematic because you might be available and then Shelly's doing something completely different.
That's right.
So, you know, we can keep working on better ways to communicate and keep the books open.
Any more? Rule call.
Sri Arjuna.
Hi.
Linda Bailey.
There's a typo in the minutes. Could we just have to fix the typo and I could...
Yes, you can amend them. You can, you can accept this amendment.
In the committee meeting.
This is the board?
Yeah.
The board. And leaving that typo and a vote yes.
That typo was Taser County Schools tax on valet instead of ballad. Valet instead of ballad. I hope that was in there. Dancing on money.
So I make a motion to amend the consent agenda to... Change the typo in the...
February 4th.
February 4th. From valet to ballad.
Sri Arjuna.
Hi.
Linda Bailey.
Hi.
Michelle Franklin. Absent, I'm sorry. Rebecca Kern.
Hi.
Judy Tru.
Hi.
Judy Strong, yes. Charles Thomas.
Aye.
We have deleted E2 of tonight's discussion. I need a motion for E3, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the activity funds for LaSalle and...
Sir, second.
A second.
Discussion.
I ask that motion be amended to include June 12,002 to January 2013. Because Mrs. McCardle was nice enough to send us the entire year.
One or two states.
June 2012, I believe, to January 2013.
I'll include as presented in the report to the motion.
I haven't said that. I've done a very good job on the LaSalle report. If I could have from March 2010 until June of 2012, I could be assured that the beginning balances are correct. Without that information, it's kind of hard to...
Wait, so what are your requests?
The last time the board approved any activity reports was March 2010. If I could have from March 2010, that month...
Are you ready with this now?
Yeah.
March 2010 until June of 2012. Then I could be assured that those balances are correct.
So you need one for every month in that time, correct?
Just, just Mrs. McCardle's.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about...
Oh, just Mrs. McCardle. She, she gave us the full year. I'm missing a year that the board wasn't getting them.
So you just want LaSalle.
Right. All right. Parkview, that's up to the rest of the board. I got the information because I asked for it. And I do want to say these secretaries, I'm assuming the secretary just do these books, impeccable job. Parkview's balances to APEN. Everything in, everything out. My concern is the concession. I did some data. And I'm going to let you see, I compared apples to apples. All we have currently this year is August through December, so that's what I compare. You will see that we have deposits in that length of time, $790 compared to 2011. At the same time was $2,633.98. You will also notice your expenses. What I'm saying is there are no deposits, very few deposits. There was one in December. And very few expenses. I'm not pointing fingers that money's missing. I don't know that. What I do see is that it is not logged. That's not the business practices.
Well, and we talked about that.
Right.
My recommendation is that PACE takes over the concession, that parents use it as a fundraiser, that we don't use children. But we can, I think Brad probably has to take some time to digest this report.
And I did make copies.
Did you for Brad?
Yes, I did. When they get around to...
It was tall and then you come back with some kind of...
The next one is a... There's one and there's one. The next graph is the whole year. My point is the deposits in the concession stand only in 2011, 2012. The expenses were $5,653.90. We were losing money last year. So something needs to be looked at definitely.
Well, you're losing money here before. Yeah, you're losing money here before.
Okay. That's my point.
Right. You have to, these concessions have been, have been used as a courtesy more than a fundraiser. And so that's why I thought it makes sense. Now I won't be here. That's something on the subject of org. But my recommendation is that the parent group take this over as a fundraiser and use it as a fundraiser and expand upon the services provided.
But out of this, what little money they did make, it was given to the organizations because I also have that which basketball, apparently the sponsor and maybe some students did concessions. So it was prorated between all the organizations and that's what they were using to buy t-shirts, pizzas, whatever it might be. So I would hate to see that go.
It wouldn't happen. I mean, the parent group isn't raising money for it. Parent groups don't raise money unto themselves. They raise money for a purpose, for the children. So if the purpose of this fundraiser is to support kids and their clubs and activities, then it can remain that way. It's just that you're using them as a vehicle to perhaps be more successful in gaining revenue from this particular program.
Well, I know this isn't tens of thousands of dollars, but it's several thousand dollars. It's, I think we all agree it's bad business practice not to log every deposit, every expense. I noticed last year there was one deposit of a thousand dollars. Where's the money sitting until that deposit's made? I know...
Well, and that's the same conversation we've had about all money.
Yeah.
And so I also made the recommendation that we take PACE money, any money in the district, and to be on the safe side, have it reconciled monthly by Sheila Gredet, like the Bingo group did. The fee is nominal, then there's no questions asked, nobody is implicated, nobody is vulnerable to implication, and you have a check and balance in place. That's again up to you.
Two questions. I also noted that there were no receipts in the Parkview for most of the pages.
What I noticed is the Costco check. I didn't see where the Costco card had been purchased.
Well, and, and with all due respect, if you have questions and concerns right now, I think you have to document those questions and give the folks who are responsible time to address any concerns. I mean, we can sit and talk. I can't speak with any intelligence to it.
And if we can't get the answers at this point in time, then I would suggest we table that until next month.
Well, and that's fine. You know, and it gives you some time to ask the questions you want to and let the people who are working with the account respond.
One more thing. This is the door receipts that Mrs. Strong brought up. When I FOIA'd the other information, I also FOIA'd that. It's, there is a definite drop. As of January 31st, we had taken in $2,100 compared to previous year, $5,230. The year before that, $7,550. So I know the economy has changed, but it's something we need to look at because I'm not sure we've got enough money to pay the referee's office.
Well, and the receipts also, remember, and I'm speaking only off the top of my head, which is why it's important to, to give questions and then give time for correct information so misinformation doesn't continue to be presented to the public. But I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, didn't we drop the price?
Yes, we did.
And we, we raised all this money on the backs of people who were having a difficult time coming to watch their children at games. And so when you look at data, it's very important to have the whole story because some of the story leads us in the wrong direction.
When was that board approved then?
I, long time ago.
Three years ago. It was right after...
Okay, so it hasn't been changed for three years?
I don't think it's been...
Well, we don't know.
There has been change in that we are no longer charging senior citizens.
Can I get the board approval?
That was, oh, I'm not flat honest. I don't remember them ever...
Again, you're going to have to take time and investigate it and then decide, you know, you're going to have to decide, okay, are you going to increase the prices? I mean, these are all kinds of things that are open.
And there are less people coming to the games.
There are less people coming to the games, but...
Our cost of... I know we approved Brett Recalls going on because to stay abreast of others was necessary.
That's why I thought it might be a good idea to have parents take over the concession because they can, they could raise significantly more money if they are purposeful, having it be a fundraiser and not a courtesy.
And I've talked to Mrs. Davis about having Sheila sit down and come up with the documentation for PACE to keep track of the finances, what they start with at the given night, what has been sold, let them track it all. And that way turn it in and that way we've got a good trail to follow.
It should be done now.
That's right.
How strong is the PACE money? Are they able to take something on that line?
Yes.
I thought that was a mom fundraising organization.
It's for...
No, you're going back, you're going back to the conversations we had when we were talking about PTO, PTA. You know, the group is formed to meet the needs of this particular community. And everybody in the group does not fundraise. That's not what they want to do. Everybody in the group does not work, from what I understand. It's divided into segments. And service learning is a part of it. Fundraising is a part of it. Special events is a part of it. But the fundraising group has been approached, as I understand it, and are willing to take this on.
I thought I brought with me that our policy number, I believe it's 480. If I'm reading the report correctly, I didn't really get an amount for, I didn't focus in on the amount for LaSalle. But I believe that there should only be a balance of 500 that is appropriated into such activity accounts at a time. And if it's over that, and if I'm reading this wrong, it's much over that.
I don't know what you're trying to...
If you look at Board Policy 4.80, Accounting and Audits, it tells us the rules for student activity funds. And I thought I had it with me because I pulled the other one. Because it's got rules of organizations and guidance and direction of staff, staff member. But I believe, and I'll have to go back, I believe it's 4.80 that talks... that talks about accounting and audits and that it should only have a balance of 500 at any time.
That can't be accurate. You have, I know of an organization right now that has $100,000 at their request.
Okay, it's either 4.80...
But we'll look.
Okay, thanks. I was kind of awakened when I saw that.
Do you approve the discussion?
Oh, we did. Here, it's right here. I did. You might not be very prone to this. This is one of those things I'm seeing that not working in a financial end. It's such a window of learning.
But understand, you are protected. We pay liability insurance to protect you. In other words, that disclaimer in the audit is to protect the auditor. But you are also protected.
That's why we do an auditor to... You know, I'm not going to rot in a simple day. To learn, to be a volunteer on a school board.
But I didn't like his comments. I'm just reporting what you've given me is his bottom line.
And I can have Ron come. Those are disclaimers to protect them.
Okay, so under 4.80...
Yeah, I wrote that down.
Under controls for revolving funds and petty cash. And it tells a little bit more, but then it says, "A check for the petty cash fund may be drawn payable to the designated petty cash custodian of the account." But that the revolving funds are limited to a maximum balance of $500.
And I think it brings the petty cash on hand to not the activity accounts, but...
It's all under the activity. It mentions activity accounts. So I couldn't, you know, it's a learning curve for me. I'm just bringing up that information.
That's why I asked him.
Well, you're the one that needs to be... So I'll rescind the motion to approve the activity funds account for LaSalle and Park View as presented and table this motion.
What could we expect out of this one, Mrs. Davis?
With the next board hearing.
March.
I mean, I can't speak for the people doing it, but yes, I would recommend to them that they have it available.
The motion for E4, please.
Mr. President, I make the motion to approve. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Record call, please.
Sherry Arsh, stand.
Hi.
Linda Bailey.
Motion is to table both activity reports. Correct?
Yes.
Rebecca Kern.
Hi.
Julie Tru.
Aye.
Julie Strawn, yes, Charles Thomas.
Aye.
Motion for E4, please.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the acceptance of the fiscal year 2012 audit.
Is there a second? Discussion.
Do you want to approve and accept both in there? And the motion, do we want both of words approved and accepted here?
Personally, I would put accept because you're not approving it unless you can go through and make sure all reasons are right. We are accepting.
I'll amend the motion to accept the fiscal year 2012 audit.
The one audit finding is always in here because we have a small office and there's only one person basically in charge of doing the books. But I've always said, we always have a check and balance system, which Mrs. Strong was referring to. We go over these reports. We get a treasures report that's not so important. We get them monthly and all the other reports. So I feel comfortable in that part.
There again. The financial comments coming out of any training is stating that the city of Dixon had that big... I remember the bookkeeper of the city took a lot of them and was found. And the only way she was found was because, and they break this out at the train. The only reason she was found was because she went on vacation and the mail was processed and done through another person. And they found the findings to...
But we do that.
Well, how do we do that? And that's what I'm questioning. That's why I'm saying...
Well, when Sally goes on vacation, we handle the jobs.
From what I know from these seminars, we... The auditor only takes what we think are important. That's why they make that disclaimer. We can only...
So what do you recommend?
What I mentioned, all of us take a due diligence in studying that. They're all essential. They really push that one, that book with. Having this auditor come in before the end of next year when we have to approve another one, accept another one, and tell us, okay, here's some areas that you need to have your balance as a board. That's what I'm hearing at all conferences.
Can I ask you which conferences you're going to? Because I love Georgia and San Antonio. I mean, are they been recently or...
It was a full day up at Chicago. And I've got his name wrote down because I sent it off to Mr. Davis and Mr. Thomas.
I wanted to do their finance one up in Chicago also.
The full day one?
No.
Okay. This was a full day. And then Mrs. Kern and I went to the one in Washington. And I'm not sure if we talked about that night or when we talked about it, but that was presented by the IESB at Washington, one of their nights. And then the Chicago Training Conference, his title, Financial Oversight Essentials for School Boards. Tim Custis, the CPAG, from Gorens and Associates Superior was there. Norm Durkland, which I believe is either a mayor or past mayor of Morden.
Well, and perhaps I can get Tim or Norm to come and help you understand that the books are okay. Because we...
I'd like to see an auditor turn Norm over here to say...
Because they've agreed, our own auditor has agreed to come. We tried to get Tim. He's overbooked.
And maybe I'm the only one that feels uncomfortable with all of the financial decisions we have to make. So I appreciate this a lot. I need to express that I have great concerns over making such heavy responsibility decisions.
Julie, I mean, we are all responsible. When you vote yes, you're responsible.
Record call, please.
Sherry Arsh, stand.
Hi.
Linda Bailey.
Present.
Present or yes?
Present.
What does that mean?
That means it's either yes, nor, no. Okay.
I write down the present. Michelle is absent. Julie Tru.
Aye.
Judy Strong, yes. Charles Thomas.
Aye.
Need a motion for the extended lease agreement.
Show for it.
Make the motion to approve the lease agreement with ROE for the Safe and Alternative School from 2013 to 2015. First, 2013 to July 2015.
Discussion.
Do we have any data on how much it's costing us?
Yes, it's, we are making money.
That extension will be the same at 30,000 a year.
And then that also, they also agree to let Concalack lease the gym. So you're getting $36,000 for a building that sat empty and deteriorated. And it probably costs you $12,000 in overhead to run that building. That leaves you some little room for unpredicted expenses. And you have filled your building, which, if I recall, was number one on your list of things to do for many years.
Could we just get a report in your spare time of how much the utilities and the janitorial services?
I'm pick list of them. Does every month?
They are. If I could go through and pick them all out, I could do that. But I think the bookkeeper can probably plug in a couple numbers and have it for us.
Empty and full month difference?
Yeah.
Cost of empty to set empty, what it costs to set full month.
And also negotiated gas prices along with electric this year, so that'll scale a little bit. But we're taking about $16,000 a year with that program.
You work with a different company under...
We, you know, indexed the gas. We indexed the electrical about four years ago. We're fixed now, I believe, with the gas.
So do they make monthly payments for 12 months in a year? Or just the time that is...
I remember the lease agreement, it says term of making monthly payments of $2,500.
So we're expecting when they're closed that some of that payment continues?
I can check that for you, but when I read this lease agreement, it would indicate a monthly payment beginning on August 1st of the year.
They pay $30,000 a year. They're paying $2,500 a month, twice a month. So they're giving $5,000 a month.
No, a month.
No, a month.
Twice a month.
Twice a month, it's monthly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw two. Said two in my head. My bad.
But it is saying 30,000 instead of 36,000.
Right, you said six thousand for Concalack.
Six thousand, I think.
Well, okay, they pay $500 a month for the gym. And they also take care of our ball field, so we've done well with our relationships.
I like the one term that they did put in that if they fail to pay, it's coming through the state. Is that what it's coming?
Well, in other words, this is a grant-driven project, so they can't have a school. But we all suffer as a result of that. In other words, if the state would pull the money for Safe and Alternative Schools, the superintendents and boards need to come together to determine if they're going to mutually participate to continue the program.
But it also gives the district a liberty to just say contract is...
Right.
It's something you wouldn't want to do because it is a nice combination with those that aren't working in the district themselves.
The ROE with their curriculum is education that they've put into effect. It seems remarkable changes for the good in the children.
That'd be nice to have. Not needed, but it'd be nice to see one around me.
Record call, please.
Sherry Arsh.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Julie Tru.
Aye.
Judy Strong, yes. Charles Thomas.
Aye.
Need a motion for E6.
I'm not sure I like this motion, but make the motion to approve selling the district truck at a minimum bid of $300.
Can we amend that, please?
To accept sealed bids?
With a minimum starting.
Okay. Make the motion to approve selling the district truck through sealed bids with a starting minimum bid of 300.
Information on the truck will be available at the district office. I feel very interested. Information on the trucks will be available at the district office.
I mean, what information would they have?
Well, I don't know. You know, it needs to be, like, a set effort.
Well, it's going to get sold as is.
Well, I know, but some people will just ask, there's going to be bucklers and transmission and how many miles is on it, blah, 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 and all the stuff you ask. I mean, is there just going to be information available at the district office with that?
Yeah, it has. It's the most information that we have.
She had discussed that once a couple of months back, and she had quite a bit of information.
I just wonder if Kenny's not a piece of cake, right?
Will this be advertised somewhere, maybe on the district website?
Should be on the website. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it'd be all that bad to have it in Keith and Times. More concessions. Record call.
How long are we keeping the offices? Do you want to put that on there? Is it a date? Are you wanting anything more?
Don't know. We can get to it. It's been sitting out there for quite a while. I didn't like the law enforcement.
I just think you just say we put it on well at this date when we close bids. We close bids so people know that...
Well, what's the board's pleasure? Two months?
I was just thinking of the closing date, so people know that you haven't been in by this date.
What is the board's pleasure on that?
I don't even know what day it is, but make sure it's not Sunday.
It's about 45 plus days.
Okay, you want to remember that, then?
Okay, with a closing date of April 15.
Record call.
You have to have a second.
I have a second.
Should you or...
Well, the minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Rule call.
Sherry Archstone.
Aye.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Julie Tru.
Aye.
Judy Strong, yes, Charles Thomas.
Aye.
Informational items, F one, an update, and save routes to school ground. Been a long time coming. And as you can see, um, F one, what they're talking about is new sidewalk on library side, uh, from Thornthorpe to St. New Park. And over at Groveland, major things are the new curbs. And, um, talked to the city last year. And I almost told them that the paint had been ordered to do the crosswalks then, and it's supposed to came in early winter. And I asked again three times this year when they were gonna paint, and like everything else, I guess they were waiting for this before they would do it. So hopefully this, and we'll see all the crosswalks, the new signage, and sidewalks and stuff that you put in.
I think we should thank the village for pursuing this grant.
That's right.
It's going to help the schools.
I've also entertained with, uh, a couple of board members to talk to the engineers to have Stewart removed from a safe walkway. Uh, I've, I've been taking my, my granddaughter to school every day. And I don't find it to be a safe walkway for students that have to go down to Creek Court Avenue and walk down.
So you think it should be deemed dangerous, is that what you're saying?
I do agree.
Stewart is dangerous.
If you, if you're going around that corner there, I saw a car just lose it and go all the way over to the back properties of some homes. Now, if there were students walking there, they wouldn't have had much of a chance. I mean, all you hear is like ramping up a teenager. And if they lost control going down around Corolla or Roosevelt, I don't like the idea of the kids heading into a ditch and possibly having a car to follow them.
Does it meet the criteria?
I wouldn't like to see it. But then, I've also asked the city to put sidewalks in on Stewart all the way down.
How that go?
Quite. But like, you can park view account.
Okay.
So who is to judge what pays first? Thank you now to the village and, um, checking in for Stewart being dangerous.
They give you the criteria, and it's up to the district, as far as I remember. You may have to sit in a car and count how many cars pass, like a dismissal time, you know, or that, two and a half an hour later. You have to do it, there's all kinds of criteria, um...
So how do we implement that?
I'm sure that's...
They may not, they may not be able to be done, I'm just asking.
They may need one of those, uh, maybe those that counts the cars that are...
Well, that, and the word, one of those signs, I have a club, you can comment to feel a bit...
I think probably the district office would have that information, obviously.
I should have, and it was in, 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 say, grant, law grant, uh, they discussed it at that time, so... Okay, an update on F two, okay, on Seth's sales pass. Do the...
An update, we've had a conversation about it, and Judy wanted to know what the other districts were doing, um, so I met with the superintendent. And all the Esquire folks, they're just simply sending out this flyer in a brochure form to register voters. We feel like it is that they are anticipating that they cannot...
Okay, update on the insurance committee?
Uh, the insurance committee meant to review six months of claims. We're approximately twenty-four thousand dollars ahead of our cost at this time last year. But we've seen a forty thousand dollar increase in prescription medication costs. The recommendation would be, at this time, to remain fully insured, at least one more year, leaving the policy intact, so that we could be grandfathered and do not yet have to honor the terms of the new healthcare law. The committee will explore methods to reduce prescription costs by encouraging staff who require regular medications to use the three-month mail-in option as savings for the district. We will also encourage the use of generic drugs. In the future, the district should consider increasing the co-pay, increasing the deductible, and increasing coinsurance. All those approaches, however, at this time, would alter your grandfather status, and we're not sure what that would do to increase the costs, because you would have to accept the new changes in the healthcare law.
Wasn't we getting grandfathered in the last part also?
Right, and so we are still able to maintain that status, and the recommendation is to, um, maintain that status at this point.
That's where we're at now, but if we meant, if we do all these changes, the recommend, we'd be out of the grandfather cost, which would cause the premiums to be threatened.
Well, it's going to disallow some of the things that we've done to keep costs down. It will open up the plan to the new healthcare law. Um, so we will meet again when there are ten months of claims, and we can better determine the district's position after, uh, two years of claim reports. Now, this year, the claim reports are pretty good, you have two less, um, critical, uh, patients. If you would continue on this path for two more years, I would recommend that you reapply for a position in one of the consortiums. It'd be, it'd really, a real reduction of, of cost to the district. But if you remember, um, we, um, because of our claim rate and because of our poor health, we're fully insured, the premiums were absorbent, and, uh, we did not qualify for entrance into a consortium. That may change, because this year, stuff's done pretty well.
So what was your communication to us, Mrs. Davis, is that at this time, it's a ten-month, there's nothing more to...
There's nothing more to do today, that we can't really, um, evaluate the program and the cost and the changes that are necessary without seeing ten months of claims. So we'll reconvene in April, maybe May.
Oh, you have to come back?
We have to come back as an insurance committee and review the, the real information. This is only half, half the story, it could change significantly between now and then.
Update on discipline reports.
Uh, just something else about part, I, I do apologize, I'm a backlog. So January, February, we're not completely accurate right now, you'll see those numbers spike a little bit, once I...
Mr. Jokush?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate your graphs, they're really pretty, and they're difficult for me to read. Would you give me numbers, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, we can have those next time, I'll get more.
Thank you.
You can break this down, look at it a whole lot of different ways.
Okay.
Well, you know, for instance, there is, what, three and a half office referrals per day in the month of October.
I got that. You're talking on the bottom?
So there is a number of referrals, so you have the majority of what the referral is for. Fifty percent of your, yeah, fifty percent of your referrals are for disruption.
Okay, but I, I see a little thing on weapon, right? Okay, there would have been a weapon at school, the board should know about it.
That could have been a pencil, though. They can use a pencil as a weapon, is that what that comes to us?
No, but, would it have been logged in the discipline report as a weapon?
I have no idea. No, they're, they're...
Okay, the update on still continuing interviews, March seventh, and as of today, there is seventeen applications.
Um, I want to consider, um, being at park view rather than the gym here in the conference room.
That would be fine.
So all of them will be at park view?
Yeah.
All meetings?
I think it's more, more inclusive.
It's probably more private.
I remember we've got eight, eight and nine, I think eight more days left, and Mr. Wells said that he sort of expected to have a few more. He was hoping.
Okay, on the flyer I saw online, it just said an April date of hiring. Can we not get any closer than that?
You can ask him when it comes, Mark.
I think that's up to the board, isn't it?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, I don't know, that's, we have a conversation...
But they're telling everything's done, because the way the state wants it is they want us to go to their area of responsibility right now, and to talk to people. And then they want those people to come in, vice versa, here, before the final decision is made by them to accept. And they want us to talk verbally to those people there, to see, uh...
Yeah. I'm trying, I'm trying, you know, we gotta give them at least two weeks to, two or three weeks to go in and talk to people. I would give them three weeks, I give them two at the most. Because I'm the one who don't like that district to speak to people, but they're not...
Okay, we've deleted the closed session. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to my second round, is there a second?
Rule call.
Sherry Archstone.
Aye.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Julie Tru.
Judy Strong, yes, Charles Thomas.
Aye.
And you need to adjourn. Uh, Linda.